7, 2022, the time is 6 o'clock PM. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Emeryville City Council's special closed session. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act provided for under Assembly Bill 361. The governor has declared a state of emergency in response to the COVID pandemic. And the city of Emeryville, in the interest of the health and safety of our staff, the members of the public, and our council members, has continued to conduct meetings via teleconference during the state of emergency. It will make findings every 30 days that the state of emergency still exists and that the interest in the safety of our public and staff is best served by continuing to conduct these meetings remotely. Members of the public can participate in this meeting by going to the city of Emeryville's website. There you will find the agendas for tonight's meeting. Those agendas contain links to the meeting so that you can join this meeting in person, virtually, if you would like to do so. And during the meeting, if you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raise hand feature on Zoom to let us know at public comment that you'd like to comment on an item, or you may press star nine if you join us by telephone. Also, if you wish to submit electronic comments in advance of the meeting, there is a submit online comment card located on the city council's agenda page, and the city clerk will read your agenda items, comment at the appropriate time. At this time, I'd like to begin by asking if the clerk would please take their roll call.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowers?
Here. Thank you. Members, are there any ex parte communications regarding the closed session agenda? Seeing none, public comment. Now is the chance for public comment. Anybody who wishes to comment for an item on the closed sessions agenda may do so by raising their hand, and I will give them two minutes to do so. Seeing no hands raised for the closed session, public comment is now closed. And members, we will go to agenda item number five, which is our closed session discussion. We have one item on the closed session for the evening, and I will see you all in the closed session. To the members of the public, we will return and report out as soon as we've completed our meeting. Thank you.[121.45]
Permit residential units over base zoning without planning commission approval if there's an affordability agreement. Everything over base zoning has an affordability agreement. So what I went back and listened to the comments, what this is really about is creating streamlining opportunities, particularly in the RM district. And that's covered in Program B two and in Program LL six. And those items are also, I think, of interest to the council where we're talking about permitting three and four units in the RM and eliminating base FAR to help facilitate that. And then at council, when we saw you in November, you expressed that you were open to increasing residential density if that was necessary to meet the RINA. At this time, we do not believe that's necessary. Next slide, please. So then the draft review comments. So we went to planning commission. The planning commission was very supportive of the draft housing element and appreciated that there are multiple programs to address affordable ownership units. And then also wanted to make sure that we're improving access to information about affordable housing opportunities, which is also being addressed in Program RR through portals that are being developed for Alameda County and big area wide. And so Emeryville will participate in those portals. And then Housing Committee, they had some concerns about the development cost of potentially requiring four bedroom units. That's suggested in Program R. Program R, however, hasn't been determined yet. It seems to look at opportunities for that. So when we look at opportunities for including four bedroom units, of course, we can also assess the cost and impacts of that. And then they also were interested in ways to address deferred maintenance in some of the older condominium buildings, which is not explicitly addressed in any of the programs, but could be folded in. And then also there was an inquiry about could we somehow include a senior health clinic to support at-risk residents as part of the housing element? So we could look at opportunities to incorporate that. It was also noticed that this is the most ambitious housing element plan I've ever seen, and it said leave it to Emeryville to do it. And also they called it great and comprehensive. So we'll see what your comments are tonight, but that's what the Housing Committee had to say. So next slide, please. So for our overview tonight, there's seven different requirements that have to be in the housing element. And this here shows which chapters those are going to be in. Next slide, please. I am very briefly going to go over everything that's not highlighted here. And then we'll go more in depth for the housing sites inventory, which I will cover, and then policies and programs, which I mentioned earlier that Valerie Bernardo will cover. Next slide, please. So Chapter Three is the Housing Needs Assessment. So that provides a quantitative and descriptive analysis for the housing needs of the city and goes over demographics and regional housing needs allocation. Next slide, please. And then Chapter Four talks about constraints. So potential government constraints and then environmental considerations as well as non-governmental constraints, things that we can't control exclusively, right? The economy, land cost, and then financing availability that's over beyond what the city can provide. Next slide, please. Chapter Five is affirmatively furthering fair housing, which I always have a hard time saying AFFH. And this chapter is the one for you if you like charts and graphs and maps. It has everything, all sorts of data on the city and how we're going to address these needs. Wow, that was fun and exciting. Let's see, I think, can we go back a slide, please?
Sorry.
That's okay. And one more, just want to make sure we didn't miss anything. Yeah, that's where we left off. Okay, let's go one slide forward, please. All right, Chapter Seven. So that's the evaluation of past performance. This is actually a pretty short chapter. It goes over the seven goals of the housing element, but where you really get this in-depth is your annual report that reports the state. So that's the big long report that you get every year in February and have to approve. This is much briefer and just goes over the overall successes and evaluation of the past performance. Next slide, please. And then lastly, there's a community engagement. So, you know, I mentioned our planning commission and city council meetings that we've gone through to give you the highlights of those. We've overall gone to five housing committee meetings. And then we've had community workshops, two of those, and coordinated with online surveys. And there's also been promotion, of course, with social media and distributing flyers to make sure that people are aware of the process and also direct emails through various email lists that the city has. So we've, this is the community engagement page. So slide on to the next one, please. All right, so this is our regional housing needs allocation, okay? So what this is showing is that we have an allocation of just over eighteen hundred units. And if you look over in the lower right-hand corner, we can provide up to forty-three-hundred units through our site inventory. Next slide, please. All right, so the requirements of the site inventory is that we have to demonstrate realistic capacity, zoning and development record, that we have some...
I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm letting people in and it messed up the slides.
No worries, we'll get there.
Tell me...
Yep.
One more?
One more, I think it's two more. Oh, yeah, one more after that? All right, perfect, thank you.
Sorry.
All right. And then we have to demonstrate the post sites may be realistically developed. So we can't just say whatever we want to say, we have to show something behind that. And I'm going to go into that a little bit more detail later. And then, of course, it has to conform to the AFFH regulations. So our assumptions when we were developing our response to the RINA allocation in our site inventory was having a realistic capacity of estimation of eighty percent of base maximum zoning. Now, if you're familiar with our projects, you'll know that that's incredibly conservative because almost all of our housing projects go over base by a significant amount. So we were using a very conservative number to make sure that we were just going to be able to do what we said if these sites are developed. And then when unit counts are known and proposed, of course, we use those instead. So some of the sites that are included here already are approved or already under construction. And then some of them, they have proposals, and if we already have proposals for that site, we included that number instead. And the city on sites, we also used higher numbers for because we know that the city is going to require higher numbers of housing on those sites. Next slide, please. All right, so here's the planned improved projects that we were able to include because of where they are in the development process. So we have over six hundred units that are underway in process that we already that we can count towards its next RINA site. That's six sites. Next slide, please. Okay, so then we have our vacant and underutilized sites, which makes up the bulk of the inventory. So two of the vacant, we have two vacant sites. We have the courtyard and the northeast corner of Showmaster at Christie. And so all together, those have a potential for nine hundred thirty-eight units. And then we have thirteen underutilized sites, which have a potential for over twenty-seven-hundred units. Next slide, please. And then ADUs we're also including in our account, but we're not including it on our site inventory map because we're not really sure where ADUs will be developed. We came up with a number of thirty to include because based on the increase in ADUs that have been submitted since the zoning has changed in 2020, we think this is a realistic number. Next slide, please. So this is a lot of information on one chart. I've kind of gone over some of it already, and I'm going to go over some more of it broken down so you don't have to look at it all in one place, but just to walk you through it very quickly. If you could, next slide, please. We have that eighteen hundred fifteen requirement for RINA over there on the far left. And then next slide, please. Twenty-seven-hundred gets us over a hundred fifty percent. Now, that's important because the city's interested in applying for pro housing. We're going to come back to you later in the year with pro housing application. And we get points towards a pro housing application for having at least a hundred fifty percent of RINA. So we believe we can meet that because, next slide, we think we can get over forty-three-hundred. So we think we can exceed that number partly. Next slide, please. All right, so this is breaking it down more simply as I talked about before. If you look at the top row here, this is kind of flipping the information on its side. You have the breakdown of income types, okay? The top line is what we're required to have. Then we have that hundred fifty percent allocation calculation in the middle row. And then the bottom one is what we're proposing right now in our draft housing element. So you can see that it's significantly higher. Next slide, please. And here's our map. You can see that we have at the top to the bottom of the city, north to south, we have different sites and also east to west. So we've covered a lot of the city, but we don't really have much identified, of course, in the RM zones because, as I mentioned earlier, we don't really know where development's going to occur in those areas. And then also there's not as much development potential there by design, right? Those are more conservatively zoned areas of the city, but we are looking at ways to help facilitate non-site specific development in those through our goals and policies.
Before you move on, Navarre, just what's the slide number for this one so that when we come back with questions, we can refer to it?
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry that didn't show up. I can't see that because Sheri has it. Sheri, are you able to say what slide number that is?
Uh, no, but are there numbers on, are these slides numbered?
You know, they were supposed to be, and it's not showing up, so I apologize for that.
That's okay, I'll just make a note, map one. Okay, go ahead. I just want, I don't want to interrupt you, but I want to keep track of more of my questions there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You know, when we're done and Valerie's talking, I will open up the slide on my own computer and be able to refer to the slides to Sheri can slide to them, okay?
Okay.
All right. Did you want to hang on this slide for a few more seconds?
No, I'm good. I just, it's a reference point, that's okay.
All right, sounds good, all right. So as I mentioned, staff at this point is pretty confident that we're going to be able to meet our RINA allocation. We have over a hundred eighty-five percent for extremely low units and over two hundred eighty percent for above moderate. So that's our range there. And as I mentioned, we're very conservative. We have a strong track record of developing housing on both RINA and non-RINA sites. So currently in our housing element, we have a map similar to what you're seeing, but we've not only had development on those sites that we had identified, but other sites as well. So we acknowledge in our draft housing element that there are sites that we might not be aware of that could develop and that could still count towards our next RINA cycle. And then how are we demonstrating developability? I mentioned that that's a requirement. So we've contacted the owners of all of the sites identified and let them know that this is what our current zoning is, that the city supports housing development, that their site is in this plan, and also making them aware of some of the zoning changes that we've had, such as, hey, we don't have parking minimums anymore. That might change your outlook on how we can develop these sites. So we've tried to start conversations with those people, whether or not they picked it up. We might try to make them aware of what potential is. And then, of course, stating when sites are anticipated, change ownership releases. When we have that information, when we know it, we've discussed it. And then again, using conservative estimates, being aware that parts of sites might be developed, not all at one time, but if there's an existing parking lot or existing building or buildings, rather, that maybe one of them will be developed partially and not the whole thing. So again, this is why we've used conservative estimates to try and be realistic about what our potential for housing development is over, again, in eight-year time period. Next slide, please. And so here we are to Valerie's portion of the presentation. I'm going to let Valerie take it away.
All right, thank you, Navarre. I know the screen does say Chadwick Smalley, but this is actually Valerie Bernardo. So I want to talk about the goals, policies, and programs section of the housing element. And what I'm going to go over are what were some of the requirements related to goals, policies, and programs? What were our guiding principles and what was the framework we used in putting together this plan? We're going to talk a little bit about what the goals were in Cycle Five versus Cycle Six. We're going to identify what are some of the new policies we have for Cycle Six compared to Cycle Five. And then I'm going to also go through some of the actual programs that are in there. There are forty-six programs in the housing element. We're not going to talk about all of them, I think I have about ten. I tried to pull things that were really focused on topics that either one had not been discussed at the Housing Committee or the Planning Commission, but also that are interesting. Next slide, please. Okay, so when it comes to our guiding principles and requirements, HCD actually did modify a lot of their guidelines this time. They put out specific requirements in regards to what certain goals and policies you must have and what specific type of programs you must try to develop and create. So when it comes to policies, we are required to affirmatively further fair housing. We have to have policies related to the maintenance, preservation, improvement, and development of housing. One of the guiding principles they also give us is that programs are really looked at as a system of projects. So it can be a project is a program, it could be procedures, it could be services, but it's a variety of those things that really help us achieve our goals and policies. Programs should also go beyond just exploring. One of the things they have been really stickler about is they don't want to see people talk about, oh, I'm going to look at doing this, or I'm going to explore that. They really want to see various action steps towards meeting that program, making sure that we're creating something that's very meaningful and thoughtful, that we can actually annually report on. We don't, they don't want to just see things saying ongoing all the time. They want to see what exactly are we doing? And then one of the things that we tried to do in putting together this housing element is we are required to identify a timeframe for completing the actions within the programs. We wanted to give ourselves flexibility, so what we did was identify terms. We have short terms, which is zero to three years, midterm, four to six, long term, seven to eight. And then ongoing are things that are going to happen all time. There are a couple of other terms that we utilized, but we really wanted to have the flexibility and not say that this specific action is going to happen by December of 2024. We wanted to be able to have flexibility because there's always a lot of different elements and things that have to go into getting something approved and adopted. And we wanted to make sure that we gave ourselves the flexibility to be able to push on those things that we needed to, but work things out a little bit slower if we needed to. Now, when it comes to our own framework, one of the things that you'll see over on the slide on the right is at the top, you'll see under Cycle Five. Cycle Five was really developed in a top-down approach where you had a goal, and under every goal, there was a policy or several policies. And under each individual policy, there were a listing of programs. We really tried to look at the process differently this year, and we did that because we recognized that sometimes programs can actually serve multiple policies and multiple goals. So we really kind of started from scratch. We thought about what are the type of programs that we really think are going to be impactful and meaningful that we want to create? And then how do those programs feed into the policies that we want to develop and then into our goals? So we're really working on a bottom-up approach for Cycle Six. So you're going to see that difference when looking from Cycle Five to Cycle Six as to how things are a little bit arranged. Next slide. When it comes to programs, there are ten specific program requirements that the housing element, that HCD requires us to implement. Of course, we have to have a program talking about how we're going to accommodate our RINA. We have to talk about how we're going to develop, meeting the needs of households at all incomes. One of the new items is about addressing and removing governmental and non-governmental constraints, so we have programs related to that. We also have policies that align with that. We need to talk about how we're going to conserve and improve the condition of our affordable housing stock, how we're going to promote fair housing opportunities, preserve existing housing developments for low-income individuals, how we're going to incentivize affordable accessory dwelling units. That also is a brand-new program that's specific this term. We need to identify within each program who's going to be the entity responsible for implementing that program. We also have to include diligent effort by the local government to achieve public participation. Public participation, outreach, community engagement is really important, not only as a part of the affirmatively furthering for housing, but just making sure that we're engaging and we're really making sure we're attracting all members of the community. So we do have some specific goals and programs related to that. And then the last one is about making sure that we identify actions that not only relate to mobility strategies, how people can kind of move up and be more mobile within the community, but also very place-based strategies. So how do we work on fixing one specific part of our community? They really want us to make sure that we integrate both of those into our programs. Next slide, please. So on Cycle Five, there were seven goals that the city had: preservation, housing development, special needs, housing type, fair housing, housing needs again, and sustainability. Under Cycle Six, we actually have five goals. And I definitely want to say that we're not eliminating anything that was there under Cycle Five. We just thought that some of the things served better as policies or as programs versus overarching goals. So we've dropped ourselves down to having only five goals. Those five relate to, the first one is housing development. So we want to ensure that we're facilitating construction on a wide variety of housing types for various income levels in a manner that promotes environmental responsibility, long-term sustainability, in support of meeting the city's RINA. The second goal is a preservation goal. We want to conserve and improve the condition of the existing housing stock to enhance the livability of neighborhoods for all residents. The third is housing needs. We want to ensure housing is accessible and affordable to very low, low, and moderate-income residents with a priority for those with special needs. The fourth is our fair housing goal. We want to ensure all community members have equitable access to safe, sanitary, and affordable housing as protected under the state and federal fair housing laws. And then the fifth one is related to constraints. We want to reduce or remove governmental and non-governmental constraints to the development, improvement, and maintenance of housing where it is feasible. Next slide. So when it comes to policies, what I've tried to do on here, and there are quite a bit of policies, so I'm not going to read through them all, but I've tried to identify the ones that are completely brand-new. Now, the ones that don't say new on them may be worded slightly different than how they were in Cycle Five, but the intent behind that policy is still there. But I'm just going to focus on the ones that are new. So within our goal number one of housing development, the first policy is brand-new, and that's related to incentives and concessions. And that says that we're going to provide monetary and regulatory incentives for residential projects constructed specifically for lower, moderate-income households. The second one under that goal that's brand-new is number two, housing type. We're going to explore innovative and creative housing options that provide greater flexibility in the development and/or use, facilitate affordability, and meet the needs of housing for all of the residents within the city. Our second goal, preservation, does not have any new policies, but you do see that that sustainability that we previously had a goal is wrapped into our preservation goal, our preservation goal. Under goal number three, housing needs, the first one is brand-new, that's housing affordability, which says that we're going to utilize available federal, state, and local financing sources and subsidies to assist in making housing more affordable to very low, low, and moderate-income households. Next slide, please. Moving on to goal number four and number five, I will say all the policies identified here are brand-new, and that is primarily because constraints didn't exist under Cycle Five. And then related to fair housing, we really had one, our goal, our goal probably was the policy before. So that's why we have a variety of subpolicies that really kind of focus on the affirmatively furthering for housing topics. So the first one is discrimination. The city shall take meaningful action towards the goal of eliminating housing discrimination and providing current and future residents access to housing opportunity. The second new policy is outreach. We're going to facilitate transparent decision-making processes through public engagement and participation, supported by the development of clear and inclusive outreach materials and expanded and innovative use of a variety of public engagement tools. The third is related to displacement. The city shall explore options to strengthen our eviction protection and tenant displacement measures. The fourth is access to opportunity. The city shall support collaborative efforts to connect low-income residents with financial empowerment resources, homeownership programs, small business assistance, living wage, jobs, affordable childcare, and workforce training resources. The fifth is segregation. The city shall promote mixed-income neighborhoods with an equitable distribution of housing types for people of all incomes throughout the city. The sixth one is quality of life. We're going to maintain and enhance the quality of life within neighborhoods, including those identified as low resource or disadvantaged, by providing adequate maintenance to our streets, sidewalks, parks, and other community facilities. Under goal five, we have three constraints. One is zoning-related. We're going to continue to monitor Title IX of the municipal code and any other regulation to ensure that the city's policies and regulations do not inappropriately constrain development and affordability. The second one is government-related. We're going to monitor the state and federal housing-related legislations and update cities' plans, ordinances, and processes as appropriate to remove or reduce any governmental constraints. And then the last one is non-governmental. We're going to monitor our non-governmental constraints, such as interest rates, construction costs, and other, through consultation with developers, lenders, and other entities directly involved in the provision of housing. Should there be any non-governmental constraints that are identified that relate to city policies, the city may modify its policies and procedures if the city action would help reduce whatever those constraints are. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, we have forty-six programs. I'm not going to go through all of them. I'm going to just briefly touch on about ten of them. I'm going to talk about what that actual program is, the policies that that program actually will help move the needle on, and then what some of those timeframes are related to some of those actions. The first one, actually, I presented at Planning Commission and Housing Committee, and I wanted to present it to you. It's on our housing development regulatory program, just because I think it's so critical, and it's our very first program. We want to make modifications not only to our affordable housing program, but to the development bonus program. And under the affordable housing program, we're recommending that we reduce the number of units required in an ownership project below ten. We're looking to eliminate the reference to impact fees so that all residential rental projects must include a percentage of affordable units. We want to increase the percentage of required affordable housing units above twelve percent for very low and low income. And we want to add an option to produce a smaller percentage of affordable units if the developer agrees to target those units to extremely low or very low people with development disabilities. Under our development bonus program, we want to analyze what the new percentage of affordable housing units shall be for the community benefit points, and that's in relationship to our need or our desire to potentially increase the percentage of affordable housing units above twelve percent. So if that number goes up, then the percentage of affordable housing units required under the community benefit points program also would need to increase. In order to do all this, we're looking at really having it done within a short term, so we want to do the evaluation, make the adopted recommendations to the affordable housing program within that zero to three years, doing the same thing for the development bonus program, and then, of course, it'd be something that we continue to implement ongoing throughout the entire cycle. The second program is our streamlining planning process. Within that, we want to streamline the ministerial review policy for all affordable housing. We're looking to streamline the process of converting a single unit to two-unit homes and potentially waiving the planning commission approval for projects that exceed the FAR. And thirdly, we want to eliminate the need for public meetings in order to determine if a case warrants an appeal hearing. We think all three of those things will help streamline processes and make things a little bit quicker. We're looking to hopefully draft that policy in a short term, have that adopted short term, and then again, it would also be implemented throughout the entire cycle. Third program is our accessory dwelling unit program, one of the new requirements. One of the things we want to do is develop ADU guidance materials. We want to create a frequently asked question page on the city's website where that ADU guidance material would also live. We want to look at exploring innovatives, initiatives, sorry, such as developing a loan program for homeowners to construct ADUs that could be affordable to lower-income households. And then we also want to meet with property owners to discuss the capacity for ADUs in multi-unit developments. Sometimes we've come across opportunities where some of the apartment complexes may have space that's no longer being utilized, and the ability of converting that into additional affordable housing can be done through looking at it as an ADU. And so we want to make sure we're doing that outreach to talk to them about those opportunities. Again, that timeline for developing guidance would be short-term, looking at doing a financing tool, something we'd look at more midterm, and then, of course, updating the website with all of those frequently asked questions and guidance material would be something that would be done on an annual basis. Next slide, please. Adaptive reuse, sorry, it gets a little smaller on this page. So under the adaptive reuse program, we want to explore conversion or replacement of vacant and underperforming commercial spaces and parking structures for residential use. We want to consider the adoption of a future proofing for parking structures so that when parking structures are being proposed, they're built in a way that can allow the conversion into affordable, into residential housing, hopefully affordable in the future. And then, of course, we want to look at potentially exploring a financial incentive program to support that program. Again, doing the exploration of doing a conversion or replacement of underperforming commercial space is something we would do short-term. Adopting the future-proofing for parking structures would be a midterm goal, and then financing tools would be something we'd look to do long-term. Program M is our homebuyer assistance program. This one relates back to our first-time homebuyer loan program. We're looking to make program guidelines to that to make it more effective and increase our usership of that program. We're going to continue to work with Alameda County in supporting their AC Boost Down Payment Assistance Program. And then when the mortgage credit certification program has credits available, again, we'll continue to support and market that program as well. Program O is our housing for persons with disabilities. We're going to, one, look to provide incentives for developers that commit to providing supportive services in our low and moderate resource areas. Number two, we want to prioritize mixed-use projects that include non-residential space for essential supportive services. We want to seek partnerships that provide in-home supportive care for our residents. We want to look at implementing a master lease program. We've done some initial due diligence and analysis on that kind of program, and so we look to hopefully implement something like that in the next housing cycle. We want to support service providers that are providing in-home care service. We want to prioritize construction of care facilities that serve severely disabled, encourage the inclusion of shelter-plus-care units in our residential projects, especially within our moderate resource areas. And then, of course, we will continue to, of course, provide our reasonable accommodations. Program CC is our Section Eight rental assistance, in which we would be partnering with the Housing Authority of Alameda County to provide referral services for those that are interested in either accepting Section Eight vouchers or who are looking for information on how to obtain a voucher. We'd want to have more updated information on our website and also make sure that we're providing that in multiple languages. We want to coordinate with our community-based organizations to expand our outreach to the eligible population that potentially would be utilizing Section Eight. To eligible, the eligible population that potentially would be utilizing section eight so that we're making sure we're advertising and and including them in our outreach. Um, we're going to work with the Housing Authority on increasing our voucher acceptance rate. And work with the Housing Authority on providing training to our landlords. And then we also want to consider a landlord incentive program. Next slide. And this is my last. Um, so EE is our resident engagement program. Um, we want to evaluate our committee and commission memberships to determine if it's reflective of the socioeconomic and racial mix of Emeryville. We want to enhance our outreach efforts when vacancies occur to make sure that we're attracting a more diverse background of participants on the committees and commissions. And then we also want to potentially look at restructuring the housing committee. So that we have at least one member of the committee who is a BMR resident, one member of the committee who was a tenant and one member who was a homeowner. To make sure we're getting adequate representation related to our housing issues. Program QQ is our tenant displacement measures. Where we're going to continue to implement the live, work or enrolled in Emeryville Unified School District preferences within our BMR program. We'll continue to offer tenant landlord eviction and harassment assistance to tenants and landlords. We're also going to continue to provide legal services um through a third-party vendor to our low-income um residents and tenants that are in need of eviction legal services. We evaluate the need to adopt emergency orders to address evictions as needed, very similar to what we did when the COVID crisis emerged. We were able to quickly. Get information back to council um and so that council could take the action that was necessary. And then fifth, we want to promote effective management in all of our rental housing projects by providing online resources and training opportunities. That's also something that we have in the works and we would like to move it. A little bit further forward and making sure that we have something that's not only available to our um property managers under the BMR program, but that could be available to. Anybody who just wants to know how to be a better landlord. Um, RR is our affordable housing platform. Um, we're going to continue to collaborate on the design and implementation of the Alameda County Affordable Housing Portal. It's really looking at becoming a one-stop shop for anybody who's looking for affordable housing in Alameda County. They'd be able to go to this website and um identify what they're looking for so that instead of having to go to every single property in every single city. You would have one place for a resident to go to apply and look for affordable housing. Um, we're also going to continue to support the development of a Bay Area Regional Housing Portal, which is called Doorway. Um, that actually would be a one-stop shop for all nine surrounding Bay Area counties. We've been working. Um, probably a little bit over a year and a half on trying to put together some of the framework related to that. A lot of the other jurisdictions are all working the same um builder of an affordable housing portal. And so we're trying to figure out how we can create one place for everybody in the Bay Area to look for affordable housing. And instead of, again, everybody having to go to the individual counties. That's much further down the way. We probably would be much more of a long-term goal. But the Alameda County um how affordable housing portal will actually is up and running right now. We're still finalizing some things on it. But it is available for people to look um at properties, at least within Alameda County right now. And then the other thing we would want to do is, of course, modify our affordable housing covenant to require the utilization of the platform. For leasing our BMR units, just to make it a little bit more easier for all of our residents. And then the last program I'm going to talk about today is our pro-housing designation. Navar made reference to this earlier. Um, in order to get that pro-housing designation, we have to identify that we either already. Um, have in place or will be having in place over the next two years, the following. Series of um initiatives. The first one is that we have to enact favorable zoning and land use policies. We have to create policies to accelerate housing production, reduce construction and development policies and provide financial subsidies. And so we believe either through what Emeryville is already implementing or what we're proposing through this housing element. Um, that we will be um right in line in order to receive that pro-housing designation during the next housing cycle as well. So that also is a short-term policy or program. Next slide. Um, we are currently in our public comment period, and so we are accepting public comments until June seventeenth. Um, those public comments that are received will be considered to be incorporated into the housing element. Um, we do have an opportunity for people to submit comments online through a feedback form, and there's a screenshot of what that feedback form looks like. You can actually identify um what comments you have related to which chapter of the housing element, and that can be located on the city's website. And so with that, I will turn it back over. I think that actually concludes our presentation, but Navar and I, of course, are here. Available and ready to take your comments um related to the housing element.
Thank you very much. Before we take comments and questions, now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. Proposed housing element for the city of Emeryville in draft format have three minutes to do so this evening. Sheri, did we receive any written comment cards in advance of tonight's meeting?
We did not.
Okay, members of the public who wish to raise their hand. Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed, and we will turn to um either questions or comments, members. You don't have to refrain from sharing your point of view. So this is um, as was outlined by Navar at the outset, there's um a considerable process. Involved here for um us to get to the final draft that we approve, which would be at the beginning of next year. So if you uh would like to just, we're not taking votes on anything this evening, if you'd like to just provide comments on. The draft, ask any questions, you can just raise your hand. I I have my own, but let's, first, Navar, go ahead.
Sure, pardon me, Mr. Mayor. Um, I forgot to mention that Nicole West, our housing consultant for this project, is also here and is available for questions as well. So I just want to make you aware of that.
Thank you. If we could just promote Nicole to um the panel there, thank you so much. Okay, so first I recognize Member Martinez for questions and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, um my questions were answered um in the, during the presentation. Um, I was wondering uh how we were addressing our vacant and underutilized sites. And um for such a small city, I'm just so pleased that we're able to make that. That uh touch point um with all of the the property owners and and actually let them know when we have zoning changes that might be favorable to them. And favorable to the city. So um I want to appreciate staff for that. And I just, I, this, there's just so much good information in this housing element, and I just want to. Um, thank staff and the um Housing Committee and everyone um who, the Planning Commission, everyone who's made comments thus far. I think um, I think it's really robust. Um, I, I appreciate the um. Idea to reformat the Housing Committee to make sure that we have that um resident engagement and representation from. Our BMR units and from rental units. And. I'm definitely excited about um going for the gold with a pro-housing designation. So um, so long as I'm part of this council, I will um be in favor of anything. That gets us there um further and faster. So. Again, just want to thank everyone involved in this and our small but mighty um staff. Um, this is a lot of work and um we don't have a million uh person staff. Um, so just wanted to show my appreciation.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Who would like to go next? Member Donahue.
Uh, when I look at goal number two, one factor is enhanced livability. Uh, and I think about what we can do in all of these new housing. Buildings and units we're going to be creating, and I think that if we can somehow encourage. Public recreation sites as a part of the. Properties like rooftop basketball, rooftop racquetball. Picketball, you know, like pickleball and like skate parks on rooftops. This is. Part of what happens in New York City to. Make sure that recreation is really available for our population, and maybe that could be. A part of uh could be considered that as part of enhanced livability and. Also, there's something else when I think about streamlining. I think about the actual construction time to build a facility. Uh, for example, our projected population is going to more than double in the next eighteen years. And that represents a lot of construction, and I just know that people who are already here. Would love it if construction would happen faster, that the actual construction times would be streamlined, and we would somehow encourage that. As a part of our uh housing plan going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to go? Comments? Vice Mayor Medina.
Um, yeah, I want to thank our city staff for such a comprehensive report. It's extremely thorough, and I really appreciate the chipper disposition of both of our presenters this evening while just powering through the very complex subject matter. Um, I did have a question about. GG economic mobility and just a suggestion that perhaps we could um include a third point there. Which would be prioritizing access to mass transit um near affordable housing sites. And that's because I think the ZIP Code study famously found that the strongest factor in economic mobility for families isn't like crime or poverty, even. Where you live, because the federal government really did pay to relocate people and test this theory. It was access to transit. Um, and shortened commute times. So that was my one point of feedback. I know that a couple. Points down, we have a transportation thing, but just, I think, to explicitly link those two things, most cities are not doing policy-wise, and I'd like for us to start heading in that direction.
Thank you. Member Welch, it's your turn.
It is. Thank you. Um, I wanted everyone else to go first since I'm the Housing Committee liaison and. Saw this, so I wanted everyone else to get their questions and comments out first, but. Just to second um Vice Mayor Medina's point about. Our staff just being amazing and powering through and getting through a lot of information. The one comment um I did have was on the um four bedrooms. I know that was a bit of a concern, but. I think it's been proven that we need family-sized units here, so I'm happy to see that incorporated.
Okay, I do have a number of comments and questions, and I appreciate. I'm sorry, I get like one chance to talk about this with staff before it goes through like the admin process. So I also want to just appreciate all the work that was done to make this. I agree with the Housing Committee. Um, like, this, like, this big awesome. Um, housing element. So I'm going to kind of just roll through some comments. And then I have a couple of questions where I just want to clarify what I think I see in the housing element, make sure it lines up with stuff that. I I had tracked that council members had discussed at our study session in November, make sure it's captured there. So um I'll just kind of go through my comments here. First is um under program A, there's in the first bullet, there's a reference to nine dash five point four oh. Three for ten housing units or less. Um, I think that might be intending to refer to point four oh two. Um, that that section of the code, I think, where we're talking about eliminating impact. Uh, the in-lu fees, um which, by the way, I really support us eliminating the option to buy out of affordable housing and actually requiring it. Um, so I just want to flag that. Can someone just confirm for me um if program B, because there's references to SB thirty-five and other. Parts of the document, but in program B, it doesn't reference SB thirty-five, but it feels like. That that is attempting to develop a policy that codifies SB thirty-five in whole or in part. Can Valerie or Nicole clarify that for me?
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay, it might just be great to give a nod to SB thirty-five in that, since we do it elsewhere in the document, because it was, I just wanted to confirm that that's what we're trying to do. Um. Uh, and program D, I thought it was, the language was weird. It says the city will collaborate. It doesn't say with who, it refers to itself. So. Hopefully, we work with each ourselves really well, but um it just makes a reference to collaboration with us, and I think that's fine. But I just didn't, if that was intended to go somewhere else, I couldn't follow that. Um, I'm a huge fan of E. And um the adaptive reuse in parking structures, I think is fantastic. I, I would um. I don't want to like put any additional constraints on that at this, the stage of the housing development or the housing element development. But um I'm really excited to see um what that could look like. So uh kudos to staff for coming up with that. Um, I have a question about F. F was one of the ones I had some. Uh, I just had some policy-related questions and concerns about. I just wanted to kind of understand staff perspective on. So we're talking about um finding ways to eliminate fees that are burdens to two to four-unit. Development, which is largely the Triangle and East Doyle neighborhoods where that would happen. Um, and I I understand that there's sometimes we have a homeowner who's like, hey, I want to flip this into a duplex. Um, and I, and they don't want, the, the housing, affordable housing impact fee is like a barrier to them. My concern is when they ev- evict tenants, um the property owner evicts a tenant to do that, and then it's sold as a condo, a small condo, or it's sold to two different people as. Condoized duplex building. And so they've avoided the affordable housing impact fee, and they've also not created affordable housing and potentially displaced someone from a naturally occurring affordable housing. So I'm just wondering if there's something here that could be added that refers to. Um, or just, I, I know we have evaluate, and we were trying to limit the use of the word evaluate. I heard that in the presentation, but. It just, it it felt like a little, this one felt a little unclear to me, and whether we could ask for deed restrictions in exchange. For waiving fees. I just want to flag that as a consideration. Um, I don't know if staff, I'm not asking you to respond to this tonight, but I will, I'm just keeping notes on this because I will be looking more carefully at that one before I would vote for this. Uh, this particular item, just because I think. If we're going to waive affordable housing impact fees, we need to do something to ensure that we're not displacing low-income people and then having people essentially speculate and. Turn houses into quadplexes or duplexes and make money off of it, because we've given them this safe space of two to four units to do that in. Um, let's see. Most of these other things people have talked about, or my questions were answered. Um, okay, there was a reference, a Housing Committee person made a reference to a senior health clinic. I just thought that that, don't we have that at the ECL or the capacity for that at the ECL? Question, that's an open question. I, I just, in, in case that was going to get incorporated into revisions. I would just note that I think that we should have a structure for that already. Um, on the map that. Navar had up, you don't need to pull it back up, but I noticed that the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center. Um, the zoning, the baseline density for the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center is considerably lower than the Christie Court neighborhood. And I also noted that there was a footnote you had about, you, you've addressed our prior guidance around. Creating kind of like baseline quadplex. I just was looking for a staff explanation as to why we chose to not. Um, change base zoning, but instead are changing the FAR. Is there a reason we're doing it that way? Navar.
I wanted to make sure that I got your question fully. So, because you talked about the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, right?
Yeah, you can let go, let go of that part for a second, because I'll.
Okay, alright.
Like, go to that, because it's the triangle neighborhood mostly, but.
Okay.
Yeah, because I want to kind of know why we're not touching, we're, we're saying we're not going to touch zoning, we're just going to deal with FAR, because then it leads into my question about East Bay Bridge, which is separate.
Okay, um, there was a lot of discussions about this, and off the top of my head, what I'm trying to remember is that. It would not require changes that could trigger. Um, sequel review, and it would also simplify the process for staff to, right now, we have um. Multi-family as a conditionally permitted use. What we could do, for example, now, all of this isn't specifically outlined, right? Because the whole idea is we can assess our options, right? But um what we could do is say, okay, um, keep it the same. That multi-unit is conditionally permitted with an exception for three and four units being permitted. So that, like, um, singles and duplexes are. So we wouldn't have to add categories and everything, would help simplify the process. Um, for both applicants and reviewers. So that would be one thing we could do. Um, the part about FAR. Um, is that we wouldn't be, I'm not sure how you phrase the question, but. We wouldn't be increasing the FAR, increasing the density, but we'd be getting rid of base. So right now, we don't have base and bonus for um. Height, right? We just have a thirty-foot height limit, and that's that. So what we'd be doing, we'd be doing it in a similar thing, potentially. Uh, you know, we have to assess, right? Uh, for FAR and for density of saying, okay, we're not going to have a base. And bonus, we're just going to have the one and have it be what right now is the bonus, and that would help facilitate the larger units that we're talking about. If we go back and look at all the Planning Commission approvals that have required going over base, not one of them has been denied. So.
I, I support where we're going. I just was, it was, it seemed like a very circuitous route to get there. And that was the only thing I was trying to understand was there, if there was a, like, it sounds like you're saying sequel review. So maybe that was the answer to the question. I just couldn't, I, I'm happy with where we're going. I agree with the. One point oh baseline FAR, or I'm sorry, not the baseline, the FAR having a one point oh gap, right, a limit. And I saw this exception for three and four units, which kind of is quadplex zoning. But I just couldn't figure out like why we, it felt like we contorted ourselves around it, not just like straight away, and I was just trying to figure out why we did that.
Oh, I think.
Mayor Charlie might also want to.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Uh, Navar or Charlie, go ahead.
Well, let, let me just attempt to explain it slightly differently. Um, I'm basically saying the same thing that Navar just said in slightly different words, which is that in the uh eastern. which is that in the eastern residential neighborhoods, we would make the base FAR would be 1.0. So it's just one FAR base, 1.0. Base density would be 35 units to the acre, which is now the bonus. And we would create, currently in our zoning use classification system, we have a use classification of one unit, we have a use classification of two units, and then we have multi-unit, which is three or more units. Right now, one unit and two units is permitted by right in the RM zone, and multi-unit requires a use permit. One of the options would be to get rid of the two-unit category and call it two-to-four units. So then we would have, we'd still have three categories, but they would be one unit, two-to-four units, and multi-unit, which would be five or more units. And then the two-to-four unit category would be permitted by right in the RM zone with a permitted density of 35 units to the acre and a permitted FAR of 1.0.
Okay. Super helpful. I'm totally happy with that as the structure for how to get there. The reason it links up to the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center was when we kind of said we wouldn't address or talk about zoning, even though we have this like massive amount of capacity over the pro-housing designation for potential unit development, it felt like, looking at that map, it just felt, in this modern day and age, that that zoning for that area might need to be reassessed for being further increased, like there might need to be additional like density or housing as a baseline, because I just kind of saw it sticking out as a sore thumb, as like two-thirds of what the Christie Core baseline was, and just thinking about it as an opportunity site we have. I just wanted to see if staff just felt like that that would be a positive thing for potentially, you know, with the, I know that our conversations over there also are tied to eliminating parking minimums and other things, and so I'm just wondering if that's a further incentive to discuss that zoning change. And so even though I'm, I'm good with where we started from, which was the Triangle neighborhood, and it sounds like staff came up with a great solution for it, seeing it on the map when I was doing the review and then seeing it today on the slide, just kind of made me think like, should we be conducting a review of that for some of these larger sites that are tied to retail and other things that have the opportunity to be granular neighborhood with mass density?
Could I just...
Of course.
Mayors? As I think Navar indicated, frankly, we are trying not to have to do an EIR for this housing element, and so we're trying to keep the density at what it currently is under our current zoning and general plan. We did an EIR for the general plan way back when, and that covered this level of density that we currently have. A lot of cities are doing EIRs for their housing elements now, and frankly, I'm not sure we'll be able to make our timeline if we do end up having to do an EIR, and we have plenty of capacity to more than meet our RENA without increasing the density anywhere. So that's why we took this round.
Okay. Can you just remind me, Charlie, with those base densities, we're like, we're 50, I think, down there, what does the bonus go up to?
You know, I have to look at the map, I don't remember.
Okay.
I'm looking at the map right now, actually.
Whatever the bonus is, it's double the base. So it's 50, is that units per acre? If it's, yeah, if the base is 50, then the bonus is 100.
The residential density is 70 per acre up to 135 with a bonus.
At the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center?
East Bridge, East Bay Bridge?
Yes.
I think the map you had earlier had it in an orange category for 50.
Oh, so the map that you looked at before was not matching, and I can see the confusion on this. The map on Slide 24 is, those colors are not coordinating with our residential densities. They're in the same, oh wait, yes, they are. Okay, we will correct that, we will check that.
Yeah, they didn't match, because that's why I flagged this. I was like trying to...
Yes.
I read the report, I was trying to follow like what we were doing with this, and I thought like, to me, it seemed like we're under, undervaluing the potential for housing there, and it didn't make sense.
Okay. We will double-check the, I will double-check the map, and I'll talk to the consultant about that, make sure that we're on the same page with that. No, it's, it's zone 78 to 135, and I also just mentioned that, you know, if we are fortunate enough to get an SB 35 project on one of those sites, it would go up even like that, right? So there, there is a lot of potential with the current zoning, and I'm glad you called out the colors, I'll make sure that those coordinate properly.
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at the map right now, and East Bay Bridge is 70 base to 135 bonus for units per acre. That's the second highest category in the city. The highest is around the core area, which is 85 to 170.
Okay. So that's what, that's when I saw the map, I was a little concerned that it was the one that we had on the slide, because I, I was a little concerned that something was different, but okay, I'm happier about that, that's why I kind of, was like, why are we not dealing with zoning? I was starting to wonder like what's going on with all that. So, okay, that was a long way of getting to my answer, but I was super informative, so I appreciate that. The next is, I just want to note on the goals that Valerie put up, the H, I wrote down one example, it was like H-4-5, but I noticed it on H-4-1 and some other ones as well. That, we have like the goal, those five goals, and then we have these policies that were on the slideshow, and I just want to ask staff and the consultant to consider the framing of positive language. So like, we have a goal called segregation, our policy called segregation. I get that the goal, and then the sentence after it says, to eliminate the segregation, you know, blah, blah, blah. We have one called displacement. I just think documents read poorly when the language is in these like negative tones, and not to ignore what we're doing, but I think that the policy is, it should be like, economic integration should be the actual policy goal, right? Like socioeconomic integration, instead of discrimination, you actually, the sentence behind it says, the city will work to eliminate discrimination in the rental of housing. It should be eliminating discrimination should be the policy goal. So I just want to, as, it seems kind of semantic, but I have found that positive framing of goals and policies is a far better way to articulate like what our city's, our city's vision is. It doesn't require us to deny what it is we're trying to solve, but it like very clearly states what it is, because I thought it was really weird to read like segregation and discrimination as like something in a document that we have. The other thing is, I had a question about eliminating the appeal hearings, can you just clarify what kind of appeals would be eliminated?
Mayor Bowers, I can comment on that.
Thank you.
I think that's referring to the two-step process of appeals, where the first step is, the item goes to the appeal body, whether it's the planning commissioner or the city council, to determine whether or not to hear the appeal, and if so, what date to set the appeal for, and then secondly, to actually hold the appeal hearing. So instead of that two-step process, we would just turn it into a one-step process.
So it would administratively just be set for hearing?
Yes.
Okay, great, that was my question. I really support Program SS and getting the pro-housing designation, as was noted by a couple colleagues. And I had one clarification on Program RR related to the single streamlined process, Valerie about BMR, was excited to hear about the doorway program. You said that the, that the county now has, like, that the portal is open and people can see all affordable housing, but I thought the goal was to actually have a singular application. Do we, are we, do we have a timeline? Because it feels like we've been on that for a while now. Is there a goal to have a singular BMR application that applicants across the county can use?
Yes, so on the portal, there is a single application. There are some slight differences, because every jurisdiction has different preference policies, but what we've been working on is actually creating a standard application that all residents would fill out, and then there's an addendum to answer those specific questions related to preference, based on which city that you're in.
Okay, and so that's current, that's currently up and running, and we can tell residents now to go to that site to apply for all their housing at one time?
Yes, and so you still are applying for each property, and when the listing is open, people can go on there and apply, but it is a standard application, people will be able to create an account. I believe it'll save some information so that when you're going back in for the next project, some information will auto-fill, you'll have to update it, but yes, that is up and running. And I'll also say that the portal was originally designed just for the county's A1-funded projects. They've expanded that to do all BMR, so it doesn't just have to be projects that received A1 funding, but it is only for new construction. We're not at the point yet where we're putting in existing properties that have units that become available through natural attrition, so it is only for new projects only.
Okay, so only for new projects only, so existing BMR in the city is not eligible to be, to apply for?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay, but, so let me ask, as a hypothetical, would like the new Sherwin-Williams BMR units be included in this?
So unfortunately, timing-wise, it just didn't work to go into the portal, we were trying to get it in there, but we are set up and running for when we'll have to do the next round of applications for the BMR units at the Sherwin. Same thing would be true for the AmCal site, when that project is up and running. But yeah, that will be available, it just unfortunately couldn't happen for this immediate need for the Sherwin-Williams site.
Okay, but we are retroactively going to be adding existing housing stock?
That's the goal, yes. We're just not there yet. There's, there's a couple of other things, I mean, they started with the A1, they've then expanded it to other BMR units. There's been questions about getting to existing projects, there's also been conversations about, could we create something similar for like down payment assistance and affordable housing? We're just not at those stages yet, but I think that's something that has been discussed and at some point will come to fruition, it's just not available right now.
Okay. Last two questions. One, Program C does cover prior stated interest by council related to developing objective standards for demolition to avoid gentrification and displacement of low-income people in homes that people are trying to flip. Yes or no?
That is covered, I'll have, I'll go to Navar as to whether that's a part of C, or if we were looking at that as a subset of... It might be a subset of TT. Navar, do you recall?
I accidentally closed my Excel sheet that had all the programs on it. I apologize.
Well, C is, C is objective standards, sorry.
And then I got distracted by that, and I'm sorry, Mayor, what was the...
The question is, the question is, so prior, we've had prior applications in the city related to the demolition of homes, and I just wanted to confirm that we have captured in one of these programs, I'm checking if it's C, that the work we're doing on objective design standards or other things like that will ultimately capture opportunities for the city council to adopt policies that allow us to prevent people who just say, oh, this home is decrepit and old and we want to tear it down, that there would be some additional level of objective standards to prevent that type of displacement of low-income people who are in naturally occurring affordable housing.
We have discussed this a lot of, as part of the objective standards review. Charlie, do you recall where we left off with that off the top of your head? This is the pop quiz right now.
I'm not sure that we specifically addressed it, but we were talking about including the provisions that are in SB 330 related to demolition.
That's right. That's right. So we, so explicitly, we're going to include SB 330, and then anything beyond that I think we felt might need additional review, that might need to be handled separately from just the objective standards thing, which is already going over a whole lot of material that we might really need to isolate and look at it, if that's not sufficiently addressing the needs of the city.
Okay. So I'm not sure what to do with your answers to the pop quiz, but I'll just, I'll just say that I, we, SB 330 was, has good components, but it was, we learned in the 47th Street Homes application, it, our current demolition statute said, had language that was considered outside of the Housing Accountability Act purview, because it wasn't objective, and so what I wanted was for us to be able to have a discussion at some point under some one of these goals, to ensure that we could develop objective standards related to the demolition of a house.
Yes.
Because what I, we want to make sure is that, that it isn't subjective, like the fit and character of the neighborhood or whatever it said there, but something like, that there's objectively evidence that the systems in the house are, had decayed to a point where the cost of replacing them or updating them exceeds the cost of reconstruction or something like, some, something, it doesn't have to be the policy itself, but something where we have the ability to develop that, because I think that what we saw was, staff said, well, all these issues with all these lower-income, long-term residents being pushed out are really not planning issues, they're landlord-tenant issues, and I really felt that that was a mistake on our part to not have some sort of link back to the planning regulations, where there is an opportunity for the city to, in an objective way, say, you can't just tell us their home is not capable of being repaired, you have to actually have some level of objective proof that it's not eligible to be repaired, because otherwise just demolishing the homes that low-income people of color live in is not okay, and I didn't like it being all left on them to operationalize, you know, their rights under the landlord-tenant act.
That's why we're looking at the SB 330 provisions, because it does have specific provisions about various things like that, and I believe they are relatively objective. It does relate, it does reference if the house was lived in by a low-income person within the last, I don't know, five or 10 years, and it also, I believe, it's been a while since I looked at it, so I don't remember off the top of my head, but it does have provisions about the condition of the house and all of these different things. So if a house was being demolished and it met these criteria, so it wouldn't displace any existing low-income people, and it, you know, was dilapidated or whatever, it could go ahead and be demolished without having to come to city council for approval, but if it didn't, then it couldn't be demolished, or there would be conditions on that or something.
Yeah, and I'll just add as my last comment on that, my last comment is, I think that the city needs to be, this, the housing element is a great place to put this as a policy or otherwise. The city has, you know, doesn't have the staff or the resources to proactively litigate or take up the rights of the tenants who are harmed by what I'll call less-than-savory development practices, especially in these vulnerable, low-income, single-family home neighborhoods. And so even though we give people this private right of action, I personally think that there should be a condition that in order to apply to demolish, remodel, or otherwise do something to a home in one of these more vulnerable, older neighborhoods, that there has to be evidence submitted, that they have actually complied with the landlord-tenant act and provided people their relocation assistance, their rental arrears, all the, making people go to small claims court or court affirmatively when they don't have the money for an attorney, and they're trying to find a new place to move their children, is not an appropriate thing. And so I view the development process as a place where the, that's where the tenant issue ends and the front door to the planning process is contingent upon you've complied with our other rules. Similar to you want to get, you want to demolish your home or make repairs to your home, you need to comply with our lead paint repair ordinance and produce the, you know, the people up front who are going to do it. I think that we should have in there that there's going to be a policy that says, you are going to produce proof that you have complied with the landlord-tenant ordinance to protect the people who lived in the home in the last three years, the last people who lived there, if you're going to make a request to do this in a three-year or five-year window, so that we don't have people circumventing this and leaving it to low-income people to defend themselves. I think the city should shut the door on anybody who wants to buy a house as a speculator, kick people out illegally, and then say, oh, by the way, I want to turn this into a new duplex that I can sell for a million dollars. I think that that needs to be in here somewhere, I don't know if council members agree with me, but that's, that's a goal I'd like to see included in here as a, as part of it, yeah. So I'd like a policy that gets added in that wherever it fits appropriately staff, that's, and if it's covered under something, under umbrella of it, that's fine, I think we should call it out as part of our, part of our, our action. We talk about, as I mentioned, displacement and segregation, I think that, that this speaks to both of those issues, and so I'd like to see that incorporated into the housing element as a plan or a policy we're going to take on. That's the last of my comments. I would just, the only other thing I'll note is, you have, the form is online, is it on the homepage, is a link on the homepage of the city website?
It's actually, if you go to housing and then housing element for the 23 to 31, it's located right underneath the PDF of the housing element, you'll see the link to the form.
Okay. And since we've got like 10 days to comment left, and it's not a burden to staff, and we could just pop a link on the front homepage, then I can share that with the community, and it's easier for people to find than asking them to navigate our website if it's not on the homepage.
Mr. Mayor, there is an item under Newsflash on the front page of the homepage that you can click on that takes you to that, that feedback form and the email.
Awesome, that's, that's great. I want to thank all the staff again, and I want to thank colleagues, my colleagues on the council for the time and put into this, and this is a super important document to a city like ours, and so I'm very excited to see all of these policies and goals operationalized. Thank you to the Housing Committee for their time on it, and to Member Welch, who's cheekily smiling, because she's seen this presentation like three times probably. Okay. All right, with that, the time, Madam Clerk, is 7:29, and the special, the special city council study session is now adjourned. And the time is 7:29, today is Tuesday, June 7, and I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Management of Amoryville Services Authority. Please note that this meeting is being conducted pursuant to AB 361, has been previously outlined at the course of, the outset of this meeting, set of meetings. Please note that all members are still present, at this time, I'll take a motion to approve this agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second by Member Donahue, to approve this agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you, the agenda has been approved. Ex parte communications, members, do you have any ex parte communications? Seeing none, we will turn to public comment for this meeting. Public comment for items not on the agenda that are within the jurisdiction of the Management of Amoryville Services Authority. Members of the public will have one minute to speak. Sherry, did you receive comments for this meeting?
I did not.
Okay, public comment is now closed, and we have action items. Okay, public comment is now closed. We have action items. Item 6.1 is a resolution of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority amending the regular schedule of the meetings to allow for regular meetings in June and July of 2022. Is there any public comment on item 6.1? Seeing none, members, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay. I second. Motion by Member Welch, seconded by Mayor Bowers to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Resolution is approved. Item 6.2 is a resolution of the Board of Directors of Mesa making required findings for Assembly Bill 361. Is there any public comment on this resolution? Seeing no hands, public comment being closed. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Martinez, seconded by Member Welch to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Resolution is approved. The time is 7:31, Madam Clerk, and this meeting of Mesa is adjourned. I always wait for that page to flip. I can hear it. Time is 7:31 PM. I'd like to call to order, the City of Emeryville is the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency, as it was noted out earlier in this meeting. In the evening, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 and the exemptions to the Brown Act. And all members of the board are still present. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Welch to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you. Are there any ex parte communications? Seeing none, now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on the subject matter of the Redevelopment Agency will get one minute of public comment time to do that. I had received no hands. Were there any comment cards?
No, there aren't.
Okay, there is no public comment tonight. We'll move to our consent calendar. There are two items on consent calendar. Members, is there a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, motion by Member Martinez and a second by Member Donahue to approve the consent calendar, items 6.1 and 6.2. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you. We have two action items. Item 7.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville as a successor agency to the Emeryville RDA, appropriating $29.832 million into the successor agency's fiscal year operating budget. There, is there a staff presentation this evening on the Senate for any reason?
There is, Mr. Mayor. We have a brief presentation by Brad Farmer, our Finance Director.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Brad.
Good evening, Chair Bowers and board members. I'll try to make this pretty quick. Next slide, please. So just to kind of review the approval process for the successor agency, back in December, the staff members go ahead and put together the recognized obligation payment schedule. It's called the ROBS. That's brought to the city's successor agency and it was approved in January. That has been followed up, and this year it was actually followed up the very next day by county oversight board approval. After that happens, then the ROBS is then forwarded on to the Department of Finance. Department of Finance goes through our ROBS with a fine-tooth comb and questions everything multiple times. They did come back with approval in April with a couple of minor modifications. They reduced our admin fee a little bit and then they increased a couple of other items. And then tonight we are presenting it to you for approval. Next slide, please. So the successor agency is, is on the city budget. It's on pages two and then 211 through 215. On page two of the revenue section, which is the citywide revenue, the funds 832 and 833, which are the debt service funds, were understated. The revenue is understated because the revenue is supposed to account for both the principal and interest of the debt service for the two measures. And unfortunately, we only picked up one portion, which is the principal, and oversight, we missed the interest. On pages 211 through 215, the correct amounts were picked up. If we can go to the next page, please. So I just wanted to show you the difference at the bottom of page 215. The city budget remains the same. Fund 282 remains the same, but as you can see here in yellow, 832 goes from 7.4 million to 9.7 million. And Fund 833, which is the 2014 E, goes from 1 million and 68,000 to 1 million and 349. So the overall budget and revenue projections for the coming year goes from 130.25 million to 132.86 million. And that is the change that we found. And actually just saw that this morning. I apologize. That actually was my oversight. Next slide, please. The budget for the successor agency was brought before the Budget Governance and the Budget Advisory Committees. They did review it. They reviewed more of the detail in the summaries. And they were, they recommended proposing the budget be forwarded to the council, or I'm sorry, this should be actually the board for consideration as presented with minor modification that I just made. Next page, please. And so staff requested the board review and adopt the proposed this full year 22, 23 budget with the successor agency. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Just to note, members, that this is limited to the Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency bonds. It does not have any underlying effect on the general fund or the general fund balances. And the changes in your budget book would be made to the baseline on bottom of page two. Okay, is there any public comment for the resolution related to the Redevelopment Agency? Sherry, did we receive any comment cards for this meeting?
No, we didn't.
Okay, thank you. Members, is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Farmer? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion made by Member Martinez, seconded by Member Welch to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you. Item 7.2 is a resolution for the Redevelopment Agency related to Assembly Bill 361 for remote meetings. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Donahue to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you. That resolution is approved. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:38 and I'm adjourning the meeting of the successor agency. Hey, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, June 7, 2022. The time is 7:38 PM. And a call to order this meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act provided for under Assembly Bill 361 in the state of emergency, as ordered by Governor Gavin Newsom. City Council is making findings every 30 days as to the necessity for conducting video or teleconference meetings. And we'll conduct our meetings to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of our staff, the public, and the council during the COVID state of emergency. We'll make those findings every 30 days to continue the necessity of such meetings. And you can provide public comment using the raise hand feature on Zoom or by using star nine on your phone. You can get instructions on how to join this meeting, going to the city's webpage and using the link provided for on today's agenda. You may also submit a speaker card online in advance of the meeting to the city clerk using the online speaker form provided for on the city's website. Please note that all members are still present. Item three tonight is the approval of the final agenda. Members, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Member Martinez and seconded by Member Welch to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you. Item four, welcome to Pride Month, everybody. And we have, it's been, it's been an odd couple of years not being in City Hall together to do the celebrations. Sherry Hartz is pride, pride setup queen extraordinaire. So I'm kind of bummed that we are meeting remotely because she and I have had a fabulous time in the past setting up for Pride celebrations in City Hall. But we didn't want to pass up the opportunity to just call out and proclaim this month, the month of June, as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex Pride Month in the City of Emeryville. I'm going to briefly read this short proclamation and invite some brief comments. So whereas in the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28, 1969 in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall riots, where LGBTQI plus protesters stood up and resisted police harassment that arose out of discrimination. And whereas in the decades since, civil rights for LGBTQI plus people have grown substantially, and Pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the Stonewall riots. And whereas even with all the progress that has been made, the rights of members of the LGBTQI plus community are still under attack, as they continue to face discrimination and persistent efforts to undermine their human rights. And whereas during Pride Month, the Emeryville City Council reflects on the progress that has been made toward inclusion and the equality of the LGBTQI plus community, celebrating the LGBTQI people who are living their lives openly and with pride more than ever before, as we also reaffirm the ongoing need for commitment to fostering justice and preventing discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas from business leaders and professors to athletes and entertainers in all walks of life, the LGBTQI individuals across the country have achieved success and prominence in our society, and we honor the fortitude of those who have fought so that others of us could live authentically. Whereas our city and the entire nation draw strength from the diversity of all kinds, and we each individually contribute to the greater whole. And by affirming these rights and values, we all benefit. Whereas the purpose of proclaiming Pride Month is to recognize and educate the community on the impact of the LGBTQI individuals who have, and what they have done to historically, in history, to locally, nationally, and internationally promote equality, now therefore be it resolved, that by the City Council and the City of Emeryville, that the month of June is hereby proclaimed as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex Pride Month in the City of Emeryville, and the pride flag will be flown in front of City Hall for the entire month, proclaimed on this seventh day of June 2022 at a regular City Council meeting by the mayor of Emeryville. So, happy pride. I don't have little emojis with rainbows and sparklers to throw off on the page here because it's a public meeting. But what I'd like to do is first offer public comment before any staff member or council member wishes to comment. Okay, seeing no public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make a remark about Pride Month? You don't have to. I will. I, I will, I will, I have one, I have one little story I'd like to tell. It's a story about a, a boy I know, actually. It's, it starts off as a little sad, so I'll, I'll warn you. But, but there's a boy I know who, when he was seven years old, he wrote another boy's name in a heart on his spelling test. And his teacher took his spelling test and gave it to the principal and they called his parents. And there was a parent teacher conference. And they sat down and explained to him that it was inappropriate for boys to write other boys' names in hearts, and that that was not how boys were supposed to love other people. And that little boy really did not understand what was being said. He got called queer throughout grade school by other kids for it. He did not know what the word queer meant. There were no queer people in his town. He had no idea what that was really about. All he knew was he liked another little boy. Those feelings never changed. He went to high school. He never, never had a girlfriend. He ended up having a boyfriend. His family distanced themselves from him. They, they made it about themselves. They told him that his affection for other boys was a shame on their family and that it was really harming him. He got beat up on the way home from school. He got pretty badly beat up and spit on one evening, actually on his third date with a boy. That happened to him. He had suicidal ideation. He ended up living in his car for a period of time. He went through a really bad situation. He never saw anybody until he was in college who was queer. And today, he's the mayor of Emeryville. And it's really important during Pride Month to be visible. And so I always wish, growing up, there had been somebody like me who was in my school or in my town or in my, any of the places I socialized, who could have let me believe that there was something better in store for me at that point in my life, because I didn't really believe that for a long time. So the most important thing to me in the role that I feel blessed to have in the city is to be visible and unapologetic about who I am and live authentically, because I know from having received dozens of emails over the past five or six years that there are a lot of people, adults and children, who do notice that, who do feel included and different in a special way in their, their community, because they recognize that their town is willing to elect a person and the council is willing to support as the mayor a queer person. We have people who identify as LGBTQI at the highest ranks of staff across our organization. They serve in all the departments that we have at this public agency for a small city. We have elected an openly LGBTQ person since the 1990s continuously for over 20 years now in Emeryville. And I think that's a testament to the type of community this is, and it's a reason why people like I stay here and give our time back to this community. So at the beginning of Pride Month, I just want to do what I always do, which is welcome every person who's here, who may watch this video later, or who knows somebody who needs a place to be welcomed, that this is a place that does that sincerely and genuinely, that you're supported here. And if there's ever a person on staff who's ever unsure of themselves or has a family member who is grappling with gender identity or sexual orientation and you need a person to talk to in confidence about how to navigate that process, the mayor is willing to talk to you. So with that, is there anyone else who would like to make any comments about Pride Month? You don't need to? Okay, great. So happy pride to the City of Emeryville, and we will move on with our agenda. Can you pull my agenda back up? Okay. Item five is the announcement of committee and commission vacancies. Madam Clerk.
Mayor and council members, we have just concluded our recruitment for annual appointments, and you are scheduled to make those appointments on June 21 at your council meeting.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, how many people in the, for the planning commission did not reapply?
Two.
Two, okay. And how many applications did we receive?
We received one.
Uh, Member Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I raised my hand for precisely this reason. I had been in contact with staff and I want to ask council to consider that we extend the application period to June 15 to give us more time to solicit candidates for, certainly for planning commission, but you know, if we're, we're opening it up, I'd be happy to leave that open for other commissions and committees as well.
Thank you. I support that. Members, do you, does anyone have any issue with Member Martinez's request?
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and we don't need a motion to give you that direction, right, Sherry?
No, that's, that's sufficient.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's leave open until June 15, all positions, as Member Martinez noted, just in case there are others besides planning commission that are interested. And hopefully we can secure a couple other good candidates to apply for these openings so we can get a robust discussion at the meeting. Thank you, Sherry, for your work on that. Okay, item six is council members' special announcements or reports on meetings and attendance. I will begin with Member Donahue. Do you have anything to report? No. Okay, Member Martinez?
Actually, on Thursday at 4:00 PM, during our regular Stop Waste meeting for the recycling board, we're actually going to be honoring Stop Waste, our annual Stop Waste Business Awards. And there's a company from Emeryville called Just Fair that provides catering services, but with a real focus on local fair trade products. They're going to be honored, again, that's this Thursday, June 9 at 4:00 PM. And you can find the link to that ceremony at stopwaste.org.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Member Welch, do you have any meanings to report out that you'd like to?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, on, okay, also Thursday, June 16. East Bay EDA is hosting its Innovation Awards, which will be in person, and it will be a block party. And there are five Emeryville businesses nominated this year. I will read them all for special recognition. Feasible Inc., which does clean tech, that's all the information I have. Feasible Inc., which does clean tech, that's all the information I have. Pop Manufacturing, Engineering and Design. Food, we've got Thinless Foods, Inc. I believe there are some people at the grand opening for that. And Petit Po, which is Petite Pot for everybody else. All right, what else do we have here? In technology, XR Safety Initiative. I think, yes.
You're absolutely between excitement and checking the record.
Listen, it's a long list, and I like had them all highlighted beforehand, okay? There's so many nominees, I'm so excited for them, and they will be on, up for contention on Thursday at a block party in this weird place that I've never heard of before. It's called...
The Bridg yard.
Block, yeah, the Bridg yard. I've never been there, so I'm kind of excited.
Yeah, if you go along the Bay Trail, you can get to it by bicycle from Emeryville. You just take the Bay Trail towards the Bay Bridge. I walk past it every morning with my dog, and it's the big...
I've never stopped there.
What's that?
I've never stopped there. Anyway, they encourage you to bike or walk. There's no parking, so they've been very clear about that.
Yep, no, and everybody coming from, we should have the greatest turnout, because everybody can literally just bike on a separated path straight down the Bay Trail. It's about a mile and a half at the most.
We should have a contingent.
And what are they nominated for? Do they have different categories?
Yes.
Yes, their categories range from clean tech to food innovation to, I don't know what the last one was, sorry, don't make me do it again.
You should really, you should really, if you're available, I really, I will be out of town, I will be out of town, but I do encourage anyone on the council who's in town, it is a good time to go and to support local businesses, and hopefully we take home a few prizes. So if you can go, I really recommend going.
Technology was the last category. It's kind of broad, so I forgot about it.
Yeah.
It's also fun, because all of our nominated businesses will be there trying to see if they get like the Academy Award for like innovation. It's a very good vibe.
Yeah, and at the Bridg yard, it will be a lot of fun as an outdoor, indoor, outdoor venue, kind of, it'll be, it'll be a good, a good time, I think. I'm sad that I'm missing it, but I think it'll be a good time.
Courtney, we can get the tandem bike, go together.
There you go.
I unfortunately will be, oh, I guess that was a meeting, I will be on the League of Women Voters for Berkeley, Albany, Emeryville, their Public Safety Panel that evening until 8:00, so.
Well, the Vice Mayor will hold us down at this event.
Yes. But also tandem biking any other time is also now on the schedule.
Also required to be a council member, okay. I do have a couple things to report out. So since the last meeting of the city council, I conducted the last meeting from Washington, DC, where we were doing a week of legislative visits for the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and I am very pleased to report a couple of things on that front. We took a different approach this year. When you elect a lobbyist, you do it differently, and we did a lot of meetings with people who issue grant decisions. And we found out that Alameda County is getting a Christie grant, which is a consolidated railway improvement and safety initiative grant, which will be used to do railroad crossing safety improvements across 26 crossings in Alameda County where people have been hit, including children, and these are going to be targeted to communities of color in the central county in particular. We had some very successful meetings. We received the second-largest grant nationally. Alameda County has the fourth-highest rate of pedestrian versus train deaths in the county, in the nation as a county, fourth-highest in the nation. So we really emphasized equity and safety on our trip. It was a very successful meeting. We also have heard that Senator Padilla has submit a $3 million earmark for San Pablo Avenue to do Phase One, which would include Emeryville. So we have that. A number of other things that are going, the Department of Energy will be coming to be part of a Clean Fuel Summit that we're going to host later this fall. Lots of really good things came out of this visit, so I just wanted to report out, Alameda CTC is doing some awesome stuff. Also, we will, we have on the consent calendar tonight our, our call for projects from Alameda County CTC, which is an opportunity for us as a city to get funding for critical transportation projects, and so that will be voted on this month at Alameda CTC to submit, to finalize that project going forward. I would also just note in terms of community events tied to Alameda CTC that on June 14th, next Tuesday, at noon at the corner of 65th and Overland, we will do a groundbreaking ceremony for our Quiet Zone project, which has been many years in the making. We got that funding in 2018 and have been dealing with the railroad on design for quite a while, but we have some construction taking place at 67th and Hollis, which is new traffic signals related to the project, and very excited to have that, so I hope folks will join us at noon. I will be sending out special invites to the residential buildings in that neighborhood, because I'm sure residents would love to hear about their future Quiet Zone. Other than that, on the air quality front, the Chair of the Air District resigned two weeks ago, and I am now serving as the Chair of the Air District for the High County Region. So we have a lot of, a lot of good things are happening, but we're very, very busy. And in terms of other meetings to be attended between now and the next meeting, there will be, well, maybe I'll just wait to report on that at the next meeting. There's going to be some additional happy reports to come out in the next couple of weeks on the transportation front. Oh, actually, no, Barbara Lee visited the city of Emeryville, Representative Barbara Lee came on Friday, and we toured her. We received a $2 million congressionally-directed spending allocation for the Christie sites and courtyard project from Barbara Lee's office, and we hosted her at the AC Transit Yard. She took a zero-emission vehicle trip around the city. We had a brief press, press visit to the Christie sites, and then we went to a couple other places in Alameda County and did a press conference at the Seawall in Alameda. Overall, a very successful event, so I just want to thank the staff for, and especially the staff at AC Transit for helping us pull that together. That was a lot to report tonight. Let's move to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing in addition to, you already announced the Quiet Zone grant groundbreaking on the 14th. We will be sending out notification of that by social media later this week, so encourage all the council members to repost that in whatever fashion you can to get the word out. We're very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Madam City Manager, is it correct to note that next week, the construction on Point Emory begins?
I can't confirm that that's the construction start date. That is the opening of the window for construction, but I can't confirm the actual start date.
Okay, well, I know that Vice Mayor Medina is particularly interested in the future of Riprap along the shoreline, so thank you to Mike Roberts, if he's watching, for his work on that project. Okay, well, that will move us now to Expartee Communications. Members, are there, I'll call on each of you to see if there's any items here that you would like to report. Go ahead and take a look at the agenda, just as a last-second check. And on this one, I will begin with Vice Mayor Medina. Is there anything that you would like to report?
I don't think so.
No? Okay, Member Martinez?
No.
Okay, Member Welch?
None.
Member Donahue? No. Okay. I'm just checking, and, no, I don't have anything to report on Expartee Communications either. Thank you, everybody. Now is the time for public comment for items not on this agenda or on the consent agenda. Members of the public wish to comment, will get two minutes to do so for this item. And Sherry, have you received any comment cards for this item or any other items this evening?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. So public comment now being closed, that will turn us to the consent calendar. Members, items 10.1 through 10.12 are, I'm sorry, 10.13 are in front of you for consideration on consent items. Does any member wish to discuss any of these items or pull any of these items for further discussion? No? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar. Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Welch to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you. There are no public hearings tonight. Item 12.1 is modifying the expiration date of ordinance number 20-016 related to the expedited permitting for temporary outdoor seating for restaurants and bars during the COVID-19 pandemic. There are two subordinances, I'm sorry, there are, yes, two. One is the urgency ordinance modifying that date, and the second is the regular ordinance modifying that date. And is there any brief presentation from you, Mr. Bryant?
Sure, well, you basically just gave it, but you have before you two ordinances, an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance to modify the expiration date of ordinance number 2019, which relates to expediting permit processing for temporary outdoor seating for restaurants and bars during the COVID-19 pandemic. The modification would be to extend that ordinance to 180 days after the end of the state of emergency. The urgency ordinance would take effect immediately. The regular ordinance, of course, would take effect 30 days after second reading. Second reading is scheduled for your next meeting, and at that point, the urgency ordinance would then cease to be effective. Staff's recommendation on the urgency ordinance is that you introduce it after a motion to read by title only, take public testimony, and then adopt that urgency ordinance by at least a four-fifth vote, and then for the regular ordinance, that you introduce it after a motion to read by title only, take public testimony, and then adopt the first reading of that ordinance. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond in questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Bryant on his report? Seeing none? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I don't have to do all my hearees. So members of the public who wish to comment on item 12.1.1 related to the urgency ordinance, public comment is now open. You'll have three minutes to comment. No comment cards were received, no hands were raised. Public comment is closed. Members, is there any discussion on this ordinance?
Move to read by title.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to read by title only. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, please read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've just introduced an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the city of Emeryville modifying the expiration date of ordinance number 20-016 related to expedited permitting for temporary outdoor seating for restaurants and bars during COVID-19 pandemic. There is a sequel determination of exemption pursuant to California Public Resources Code Section 21080B4 and State Sequel Guidelines 15269C and 15061B3.
Thank you. Members, is there any further discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion on the ordinance itself.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this ordinance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you. The urgency ordinance has been approved. Item 12.1.2, is there any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to read by title only? I'm sorry, actually, is there any public comment? Sorry. Seeing no public comment. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to read by title.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Martinez, seconded by Medina to approve to read by title only. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Ms. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've just introduced an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Emeryville modifying the expiration date of ordinance number 20-016 related to expedited permitting for temporary outdoor seating for restaurants and bars during COVID-19 pandemic. There's a sequel determination of exempt pursuant to California Public Resources Code Section 21080B4 and State Sequel Guidelines 15269C and 15061B3.
Thank you very much. Members, is there a motion on this ordinance? I move the ordinance?
I second.
Okay, a motion by Bowers, seconded by Donahue to approve this ordinance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you. Item 12.1.2 is a resolution of the City Council of the city of Emeryville adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2223 and appropriating funds for fiscal year 2223. Good evening, Mr. Farmer.
Good evening. Well, this is, this is the big ticket. This is what we worked for all spring to bring together and bring you a budget for next fiscal year. Bring the next page, please. I want to remind you that this is a second single-year budget. Two years ago, when we entered the pandemic crisis, we decided to move to a two-single-year budgets with the hope that we will be moving next, the next fiscal year will be a two-year budget back on normal cycle. This budget continues to utilize one-time funds, which I'll get to in a second, and it also keeps the focus on the existing capital improvement program that was approved for 19 through 24. Next page, please. The current budget in the general fund uses a $1.4 million in the federal stimulus, that's the ARPA funds. We got $1.4 million in the current fiscal year, and that is the second allocation that will be coming to us. We have already provided support and resources to be able to claim all of the 2.8 between the two years, not have to pay any of it back based upon what we've already spent, and it is based upon the loss of revenue, which was one of the provisions that we're able to do. We are continuing in this budget to defer transfers to the litigation fund as there's ample funding at this point there. In the general fund, we're asking to utilize $2.36 million of unallocated general fund fund balance. That's not getting into the reserves at this point. And then we're also maintaining the allocation of residual property tax consistent with last year fiscal year 2122. All of those account for about 11% of the general fund expenditures for fiscal year 2223. Next, please. So this is the overview of the general fund. As you can see here, this is going to be very familiar to what we showed you before. The net results of current year are projected to come in with a $1.8 million surplus to the general fund. As I had mentioned before, some of that comes from the community development, and so some of that money is restricted, about 1.4 million of that. But the big thing is, is kind of when we started this, we were at utilizing one points, or we were expecting to use $6.16 million in fiscal year 2122. We're actually coming in with a surplus. So I say that just because I want to preface this that fiscal year 2223, we're expecting to utilize 2.3, so that's greatly reducing the projected use. And then as the economy continues to hopefully rebound more, I'm hoping that we're going to be in the same situation, you know, in six months, nine months from now, we have a little bit better idea of how our revenues are proceeding, as well as all the departments have done an excellent job in the last couple of years, keeping costs down where possible. But we are asking to utilize $2.3 million, or $2.4 million, to round up a little bit. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there is no use of the economic reserves, and the city does maintain its 50% policy in the reserves, which is very healthy, and something that we should all be very proud of. Next page, please. On the general fund, you can see here that in the current year, we're going to spend about $47.5 million, and we're projecting to spend about $47.8 million next year, and that does incorporate the recent labor negotiations that were extended for one year instead of going out for a normal three-year period. And one of the things I wanted to really point out is that, you know, CalPERS costs continue to go up, and they're going to continue to go up as we move forward throughout time. We could go to the next page, and I know you've seen this one before, but I just wanted to continue to show it to you, because this is, this is something that's going to continue to be something that weighs heavy on the city as we move forward. You can see the curve is flattening out a little bit, but it's still an upward trend, and this is the cost of CalPERS, not only for the past, so if you see like the, I guess it's, on my screen, it looks like it's a rust color, that's the general fund UAL, which is the unfunded actuarial liability, and that is the big driver, and that's the cost for prior service moving forward, and that's going to continue to go up over the years. But as you can see, like with the rest, they're pretty much starting to level out, and that all has to do with the whole trend of CalPERS raising the cost, and then if there's any deficit or excess, it's amortized over 20 years instead of the old 30 years. So as we move farther down the road on this graph, we'll see those trends tend to start to top out hopefully. But there's still some pretty major swings in there over the next few years. Next page, please. So this is our reserve funds. As I mentioned there, we are putting a little bit, $100,000 into the economic uncertainty in the current proposed budget, but we're not expecting to utilize any of that, and[1796.28] And that's the same thing with the earthquake insurance, where we're adding just a few dollars there. I'm not expecting to use any of that. And on the first 115 plan, that is the fund set aside to help cushion somewhere down the road, that UAL. We maintain this fund here, it's a side fund, it's not with CalPERS, it's under city control, so should anything ever happen, council has the ability to access these funds for those purposes or whatever it desires. The $60,000 in expense there is the admin costs and trustee fees that we have to pay. Next slide, please. And so, as all of you were with us at the successor agency, we did notice that on page two, the revenues for funds 832 and 833 were understated, approximately $2.6 million. On pages 2, 11 through 15, they were actually correct in the budget book, so we do have to make a change to page two. If we can go to the next page, please. And once again, these are the very bottom of page two in the operating revenues, and you can see there, I've marked them in yellow, the differences going from 7.4 to 9.7, and 1 million to 1.3 million, and overall revenues expected is 130.25 million, and it goes up to 132.86. And the difference in the two top numbers there is because, honestly, I just missed calculating both the principal and interest. I only picked up the principal and left off the interest, but we caught that as we were looking for this presentation today. We can go to the next page, please. So this budget has been reviewed by the Budget and Governance and the Budget Advisory Committee. Thank you to my members here and to the members who may be watching and the Budget Advisory Committees. They did a great job in helping us navigate these waters in the last couple of years. Next page, please. And so staff has requested the City Council review and adopt the proposed fiscal year 2223 budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the mayor or council members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Any members have clarifying questions or questions about the contents of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2223? Seeing no questions, we'll move to public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on the budget may do so now. We have no public comment? Okay, well, I just want to take a moment and on behalf of the Budget and Governance Committee, which is comprised of myself and Member Martinez, I want to thank our extremely dedicated and hardworking finance team. I want to thank Christine, Brad, Peggy, uh, who am I missing? That's it, that's the Budget Committee right there.
Yeah, but you've got, you've got some good staff support in the Finance Department from Andrea and Monica and Eileen as well.
Thank you. I was going to say, I know there's other people doing the work that don't come to the committee meeting, but a small but very cohesive group of people, and I want to thank the members of the Budget Advisory Committee. We have, we granularly have stepped through the last two years of budget planning and really broken down what was actually a policy we adopted, I think the budget cycle before, which was to do two-year budgets, and then we deconstructed it for the last two years so that we could not, kind of like, overpredict the COVID issue. And so we've, I think, done a really good job. We've seen a lot of progress on some of the revenues that needed to rebound. We have a couple that are still in some muddy water, for sure, but the clarity and the work that we've done, and I want to thank the members of the City of Emeryville's staff for working with us through that and being patient and understanding how important it is for the city to be really conscientious with such volatility around our revenue streams the last couple of years. And what, we're not quite out of the woods yet, but we are definitely headed in a better direction than we thought we'd be, I think, 12 months ago. So that is all due to commitment and really leaning in, and I just think the city is in the position it is because of a team effort. So with that, do other members have comments on the budget? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Member Martinez, did you want to say anything?
I couldn't have said it better than you did yourself, Mr. Mayor, so I'm happy to make a motion to accept the budget.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the budget for Member Martinez.
I'll second.
And a second from Vice Mayor Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you. Item 12.3 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting an appropriations limit for the 2223 fiscal year of $132,398,346. This presentation is linked with page two of your budget book, which is the total amount of appropriated monies that can be allocated between the City of Emeryville's budget and the redevelopment successor agency. Mr. Farmer, have I covered the presentation adequately?
You have. I just wanted to let you know that we're definitely under the limit at this point, so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Members of the public who wish to comment on the appropriations limit, we'll have three minutes to do so. Seeing no hands raised, public comment is closed. Members, is there discussion or questions for Mr. Farmer? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Martinez to approve the appropriations limit resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you. Item 12.4 is a discussion on whether to add a future agenda item to consider amending the rules of procedure for the local boards, committees, and commissions to change the terms of community advisory bodies to align with the calendar year rather than the fiscal year. This is, this is my, my item and in terms of reporting out, and I just wanted to offer us the opportunity to discuss whether people thought it was, I, I think we've lined this up historically with our budget, and I understand why, but then I've always found it really inconsistent with the fact that, like, they come and bring us their goals in, like, March, and then there's, like, a whole new group of people two months later. It just felt really, like, the calendar felt really kind of awkward to me. We, we get elected as officials in November and sworn in in December, and I've kind of always felt like, you know, how at the end of the year, we, like, select ourselves for our appointments and our committees and our boards, and we go over our own rules of procedure, we approve our own calendar. I feel like that's, we do all that stuff, but that's two meetings in December, and I feel like maybe we should be doing committee recruitment and selection at the end of December to have calendar year appointments. I'm not wed to the idea, but I just wanted to have a discussion before we go into it this year, because it does, it feels off sometimes. It feels hard to recruit people in the middle of summer, because it's like people, especially with people with families, they don't know what their school year is going to be like, and some people move in the summer. So I don't know if people have thoughts on it, I just wanted to have the agenda, the conversation.
Are we in discussion now?
We are, yeah. So is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Vice Mayor Medina, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know if end of, end of December is a better time than midsummer to be doing recruitment, because, like, people are going to be out of town, focused on holiday trips, perhaps, and maybe even less focused on, I mean, hit them with January 2nd for now is the time to get specifically engaged, but like, mid-December feels bad for me.
So if we made appointments in January, like, with a January appointment time, do you think that's better?
Oh, I was kind of kidding. I don't know if anyone actually makes a New Year's resolution for that. That'd be some psycho stuff you do.
Hey. This is Pride Month and that was on the pullback. Okay, someone else have a comment other than Vice Mayor Medina?
You get to call everything homophobic this month.
I do, I do when you attack me publicly. Member Martinez?
Yeah, I, I think January is actually kind of tough, because, for the same reason, for the holidays, and then, you know, we, new council members will have been on for, you know, what, three weeks, and then they generally don't get their training until, you know, what? I, I went to new council training, like, around January 19th or 20th, when I was first elected. So it's, like, on top of, like, being new to office, trying to get folks to apply to commissions, I think, I just think it's a tall ask for that time of year. But maybe, I would consider moving to a different time of year if you don't think June is, is a good one. It does seem to take us by surprise every time.
Well, it just feels like the staff are doing the budget at this time of year. It just feels like there's a lot, like, a lot going on in this quarter, and I think it's hard to recruit people when they're, like, making their summer plans, and there may not be a right time. The, the alternative, I think, is, like, we, we list the positions in July, and they have all of August to apply, and maybe, like, the second meeting is September, after they're, like, they know what their kids in school, it's going to be, like, they kind of get their kids out the door, and they can kind of commit to it, because then they can also have that meeting in September to plan their goals for the year. Because I, I just am always thrown off by, like, getting their goals in March. I'm like, isn't your year over? I mean, like, why am I getting this now? So that's, that's my thoughts, but Member Welch?
I was also going to recommend September. It just feels like a fresher start, for some reason. I don't know, it just feels like, yeah, like, June, people are kind of burnt out, like, especially parents, and you're just kind of getting to the point where it's like, finally I'm able to go on vacation, finally I'm able to decompress a little bit. So summer just feels like people aren't paying attention, to be honest. So it feels like the natural start of, like, the school year, getting back into the groove of things, but then it's also not, like, right after the holidays, where people are also kind of burnt out and trying to get back into the groove of things, and then it's also not late in the year, like, during the holidays, and people really aren't paying attention. So I feel like September feels like a, a natural start time for that.
Okay. Member, Vice Mayor Medina?
Actually, I'd like to ask our city manager, who just raised her hand, like, I haven't worked in a ton of other cities, so I don't know when they generally do it, if there's any insight from when other cities tend to land at their recruitment, or is there truly no answer to this recruitment puzzle?
Yeah, I was going to ask Christine and Sheri as well, so you're welcome to share with us your words of wisdom.
So I think, from my perspective, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's no perfect answer, but I would just observe that if you would like committee members to be appointed at either of your meetings in September, that means that you're doing your recruitment in July and August. So remember that we opened, so for your June 21st meeting, we closed the recruitment on June 5th, and it's open 45 days before that. So remember, that means we started the recruitment in April. So we, we always think way behind where you are. When you think of a meeting, we're, like, weeks behind you on that, so...
Ahead, you're ahead of us.
Um, it's all perspective, but I think that if, you know, introducing September, it's not tied to either the fiscal year or the calendar year, and asking committee members to be seated in September and then put together a work plan when they've not been on the committee for, or, or report out on the accomplishments for the previous committee, I'm just, I'm not sure there's a really perfect answer, but it is also true that the Planning Commission by ordinance, I just want to remind you, is seated in July. So regardless of what happens with these other committees, you will have at least one major commission that will still have its appointments happen in June for terms starting in July. I think from staff's perspective, and I will certainly give plenty of time for Sheri and her, to weigh in on behalf of her team, doing the recruitment in the spring, they are not deeply involved in the budget, so I'm not sure that the budget process really affects the clerk's office ability to conduct the recruitment, if that's what the concern was. So I just, I want us to think carefully about what the timing is of the application process as we think about the appointment date. So Sheri, you want to add more?
The only thing that I would add is the difficult logistics that would be involved. As council is aware, we've got several different term lengths, so many of the committees and commissions have two-year terms. However, a commission on aging, for example, is a four-year term. So there are people currently sitting on that commission that have committed and applied for a certain term, that if we change this up, we would have to think through very carefully how we would ask them to extend or shorten their term in order to get everybody in step. Then there's also the three-year terms of Planning Commission, and public art complicates it further by having some two and some three-year terms. So in thinking about, and I did a little back-of-the-napkin logistics today while I was thinking this through, it would, it would be interesting to figure out how to phase everybody in, to get them in sequence for a new term expiration date.
And if I, if I could just add, Sheri and I, thank you, Sheri, for emphasizing that. We did have a conversation about that today, or a couple of days ago as well. It would likely take a couple of years to sort this all through for those terms to be teed up if the council did decide to change the appointment dates, given the various structures of the committees and the term lengths. So just for expectation management, for your consideration.
Yeah, I, I, my experience is if you, if we pick people now, and we've got a goal of, that's why I wanted to have this meeting before appointments, like, if we, if we were to say, we want to move it to January 1, we would appoint people now for periods that would be, whatever Sheri defined as the terms, let's say it's two years, two years plus, we'd say, plus six months, we'd be transparent about that, knowing that those seats won't come up until then, and then every annual period that would come up for appointments between then, those seats would be realigned. So I agree that it would take multiple periods of time to do it, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't result in a deficiency of seats necessarily.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to, just to clarify, this, the conversation that you are having tonight is a discussion? There's no changes to the term limits as a part of this? So as far as we, that would not be, that would not be applicable to the committee appointments that you will be considering on June 21st, nor would the people who would have applied for those committee appointments on June 21st have known anything about these possible modifications. So what we would recommend is that you move forward with the appointments on June 21st under the current rules that the council has adopted and that people applied under, and then you would implement those changes in, in the next cycle that would likely involve the lengthening, as you mentioned, the lengthening of some terms to, to tee them up with whatever the changes are that you ultimately, if you choose to make these changes, that you ultimately decide on. But I, I do not think they would be applicable at your next council meeting.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Out of, out of others, I, it just sounds like there's never a right time to do this.
Yeah, I think we should have, like, a PSA. There's never a right time, so you should always apply for city council committees and commissions. But yeah, I think, I think you've identified something that's a problem, Mayor. It's just that we don't necessarily have the clearest solution for it right now.
Yeah. I just find it, it's a hard time of year to get people to apply, but I hear all the other points about vacation and summer and the 45-day listing period. I guess my mind had been listed at September 1, recruit all the way, and had the second meeting in October, and then they have between October and December, so when the new council is seated, they're telling the new council in December, here's our work plan, right? So it would be kind of like, and maybe it's like in October, or an October, to be like, October thing, but they're, like, teed up for recruitment in the fall, everyone's back in school, parents are around, they, we pick people in October, they are seated November 1st, they use the November meetings to identify their work plan, they report it in December to the new council, here's our work plan for the coming year. But it, I, I was just trying to find a way to, like, streamline it and kind of get it on the same timeline as other things, but it just sounds like it's not worth it, maybe. So, we had the discussion. I don't hear anybody clamoring to change it after the discussion. Is there anybody who wants to change it? No? Okay. So that concludes item 12.4. And we'll move to item 12.5, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville making the required findings for somebody bill 361. Is there any public comment on the AB 361 motion? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Member Martinez and seconded by Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you, that's approved. Before we move on from this side, I just have a question for staff. Given that we have to make findings every 30 days, is there a proposal right now to deal with the month of August?
We're going to bring that to you at your July, your July meeting as part of your consideration of the findings the next time.
Okay, thank you so much for answering. All right, next is item 13.1, which is the Planning Director's Report. Welcome back, Mr. Bryant.
Uh-oh. Let me let him talk.
Thank you, Sheri.
Sorry, Charlie.
Mayor Bowers and members of the City Council, this was my regular monthly report on recent actions of the Planning Commission. Their last meeting was on May 26th, and there were five items on the agenda as listed on your agenda. I will note, however, that three of the five items were not heard on May 26th. The Emery Station Overland project, due to a notification error on our part, was continued to a special meeting, which will occur tomorrow night, Wednesday, June 8th. For the marketplace and lab master site program items, there was not a forum due to absences and recusals. So the marketplace item was also continued to the special meeting tomorrow night on June 8th. And the lab master sign program was continued to the commission's regular meeting on July 28th. So that left the housing element and the mass timber item. The Planning Commission held a study session on the housing element and you have just heard basically the same presentation, somewhat modified earlier tonight. And the Planning Commission's comments were summarized at that study session, so I won't bother to repeat those now. And then the mass timber item, that is an amendment to the planning regulations that was previously directed by the city council. The commission voted unanimously to recommend that you adopt these amendments to the planning regulations and that is scheduled to come to you for first reading on July 5th. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bryant related to the Planning Director's Report? Thank you, Charlie, for presenting that. Are there any other director's reports this evening, Madam City Manager?
There are none, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That will move us past item 13 to item 14, future agenda item requests from council members. Member Welch, do you have any future agenda item requests this evening?
No, Mayor Bowers, thank you.
You're welcome. Member Donahue? Member Martinez?
I, I actually just wanted to ask our, our city manager if there's any potential need for the Budget and Governance Committee to meet before October, just in light of the movement in the markets and recent actions that we've taken to adjust our investment policies?
I don't believe so, council member. We haven't implemented the investment advisory contract yet that will hopefully be coming to you in July. So my estimate is that your October meeting will be appropriate because that will be an opportunity to review the, the initial results of the implementation of that new contract.
Okay, great. And I, I presume that the vendor will be there at the, at our July meeting for us to ask questions about just movement that's been happening lately.
Absolutely. And I would encourage you to think about in, in advance of that meeting, reviewing the investment policy.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Medina? No? Madam City Manager, I know I had written something down and I can't find it that we had talked about, that I was going to ask about, but I can't remember what it is. I don't.
Proclamations?
Oh yeah, thank you. Members, I wanted to agenda an item for a policy item. So between council meetings, if there is, the proclamations don't have any standing like resolutions or ordinances and we often do like we did tonight with Pride Month, have an event here. But there have been opportunities to recognize individuals in the community that come up that, due to the timing of a request or the opportunity to recognize them, fall outside of the time to get them either agendaed or noticed up or at a council meeting. And just wanted to have a future agenda item to just discuss whether the council would consider a policy that allows the mayor to, to like, we define a limited space for the mayor to issue a proclamation outside of a council meeting that just recognizes or honors someone in the community. Is that an okay thing to discuss, having a policy around that? Okay, I see majority support for that. The other thing I would like to ask, and it's, I don't have what I need to give you all the details, but I just want to placeholder it, is if we could just potentially for the June 21st meeting, so it fits into this budget cycle, this current budget year, to placeholder an agenda item to authorize travel by the mayor. So I don't think I'm going to get in trouble for saying this. So I have been given verbal invitation to participate in a study tour with the government of the Netherlands related to active transportation infrastructure. And the proposal I have received is almost completely funded for by the Dutch government with one exception, which is air travel. And I just wanted to, it's not within the state of California, I wanted to have a placeholder to ask for council approval to allow for me to have that as an expense on behalf of the city council, since I'm being invited in my capacity as a council member. Is everyone okay with having a placeholder? I haven't got my letter yet, but I won't have another chance between October 21st to give it to you and so, okay.
Mr. Mayor, can we open that up for other council members as well, for other travel? Because I have an event that I'm, I'm asking another member of council to join me at and we're trying to figure out what the proper agency is to ask, to contribute to travel, depending on, you know, where the, where the speaking engagement, what the topics are.
Yeah, that's totally, I, I'm support, so who's in favor of that? Everybody? Okay, so what I'd like to ask staff to, to just structure this properly is that, how about the guidance that's been given on both of these items? Is that when there is, when a council member has received the necessary invitation related to council member travel request, that is sufficient to agenda the item, that the, the guidance right now from the council is that we don't need to come back and then ask again to agenda this item, that, that guidance is being given now to agenda the item? Does that make sense, Madam City Manager? We're giving the authority to agenda the item for discussion upon, in advance.
Actually, no, it doesn't. What I heard was a request to have an item on the June 21st meeting that authorizes a payment for travel by the mayor and payment for travel by a council member. And so the council would discuss at the June 21st meeting those two requests.
Okay, and what I'm saying is that if either of us don't have the information we need to authorize that.
Then you just don't need to discuss it.
Yeah, but just allowing us to not have to re-request it is all I'm saying, is that it could be moved to the July meeting. If, if, if it's, we're authorizing the discussion, if everyone has what we need by June 21st, we'll discuss it for those items on June 21st if.
And so on June 21st, you would just carry the item over to whichever July meeting you preferred?
Yes, for either or both of those requests, yes.
Right, so on Friday, we'll publish an agenda for June 21st and we'll include an item that addresses both of these. And if you choose not to take action on that on the 21st, you can just hold it over to July.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify, that's all. Thank you. Okay, everyone good with that? Is there any other future agenda item requests? No, okay. Well then, the time is 8:37 and this meeting is adjourned. Happy Pride, you all go out and go sprinkles and unicorns online, okay?
It's election day too, let's go check.
Oh yeah, go, go, go check who won and who lost. All right, bye.